Seeing as it is 7:30, I am going to call to order the December 6, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Governor's Council. The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Present.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Present.
Counselor General Awitt?
Present.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Ma?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
President and Conventius?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh my God, we thank you for bringing us together this evening, inspire us.
We pray that you bless and protect all the people of our city and so guide and inspire us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announce open meeting recording subject to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 passed and signed by the Governor on June 16, 2021. This meeting of the City of Gardner City Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner by viewing the live broadcast on Gardner Educational Television, Channel 8, and Gardner City Hall's YouTube channel. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the city's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And just a reminder, since this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, there will be a roll call vote on all motions. If you'd like to be recognized, please raise your hand in front of your camera and I'll recognize you by calling on you and then you may proceed. And for the members of the public watching tonight's meeting, I would like to mention that the City Council is meeting remotely this evening due to a city councillor's exposure to COVID-19, and we will be back meeting in person as soon as it is safe to do so. We will begin with the reading and approval of the minutes of September 20, 2021 Regular Meeting, October 4, 2021 Regular Meeting, October 18, 2021 Regular Meeting, and the November 1, 2021 Regular Meeting. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I move that we accept those minutes that you've identified and accept them as printed.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Mack to accept the minutes as printed. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Ron Cormier?
Since the motion is to accept all of the minutes together, I was absent from the September 20 meeting. My vote will be for the other three. And excuse myself from the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. There are no public hearings, communications from the mayor, appointments. Item 10575, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Lynette Gabriella to the position of Veterans Agent slash Veterans Burial Agent for term expiring November 16, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Walsh?
Yes, the Finance Committee is favorable. We met with the appointee as well as the mayor. The mayor indicated that Ms. Gabriella has been serving on a temporary basis for a period of time and has been very pleased with her services. Ms. Gabriella herself presented herself as very enthusiastic about performing the duties of the office and was aware of the requirement that there be some travel involved to the other towns that we've now taken responsibility for veteran services. It's a one-year appointment. The mayor was enthusiastic about this appointment. The Finance Committee shared that enthusiasm, and I move confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 10576, a measure authorizing free parking at downtown meters from December 1 through December 31. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee was favorable. We met with the mayor on this and we would hope him wholeheartedly to their request to try to encourage downtown businesses for this period. So I make a motion that we authorize free parking at downtown meters from December 1 through December 31.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh to authorize free parking at downtown meters from December 1 through December 31. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 10577, a measure authorizing acceptance of City of Gardner 2021 re-presincting plan. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Walsh?
Yes, Finance Committee met with the mayor on this and he explained the process by which we ended up with the map and the descriptions that are before us tonight. There are changes because of a 5% increase in the population of the city based upon the most recent decennial calculation, ten-year calculation. At the time that we and so the Finance Committee is favorable to the acceptance. At the time we met, we were not, we did not anticipate that there would be a remote meeting and we would not have the opportunity to look at the large map. If other people are, if they're those who are for some reason uncomfortable with acting on this from a remote capacity, I think the Finance Committee would be receptive to a referral back to it. But Finance Committee was satisfied with the layout of the precincts as well as the descriptions of the precincts and wards. And so I move that we accept the 2021 re-presincting plan for the City of Gardner as delineated by the precinct boundary map prepared by the Office of Secretary of the Commonwealth and described further in the legal descriptions and blockings listed with the attachments and made a part there too.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to authorize acceptance of City of Gardner 2021 re-presincting plan. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item number 10578, applications for motor vehicle dealer's licenses Class 1. Item A, Rob's Dino Service LLC, 268 Coleman Street. B, Salvador Chevrolet 442 West Street. C, Salvador Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram 442 West Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to refer to the Public Safety Committee for study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardin to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 10579, applications for licenses to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles, Class 2. A, Wilson Auto Sales, 119 Pearson Boulevard. B, Blake Motors, 412 Main Street. C, JPJ Automotive LLC, 78 East Broadway. D, J-Wood Incorporated, 361 West Street. E, AC Auto Clinic, 411 Parker Street. F, Gardner Five Star Auto Sales, 407 Chestnut Street. G, Mike's Auto, 251 East Broadway. H, Osagi Enterprise LLC, 43 Toby Street. I, Rick's Radiator Repair Used Car Sales, 800 West Broadway. J, TJ and Sons Auto Sales located at 537 West Broadway. K, Salvador Chevrolet, 249 Timpani Boulevard. L, Salvador Chevrolet, 421 West Broadway. M, Automart, 182 West Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, I make a motion to move this application to Public Safety Committee for a study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardin to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item 10580, application for licenses to deal in motor vehicle junk, Class 3 for Osagi Enterprise LLC, used auto parts, Sales 43 Toby Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, I move to refer to the Public Safety Committee for a study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Hardin to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, Item 10553, a measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by the Executive Department. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes, leading up to a motion, city received a very, very generous donation of $2,000 from Yin-Yan Restaurant. And the Executive Office put together a team and they discussed it. And what was presented to the Finance Committee was, they felt the best use of it would be to the Backpack Program, which helps undernourish, if you will, kids in the school program. Kids that through some financial difficulties perhaps are not receiving as much nourishment as they need when they're at home. So we felt very strongly about making the motion that the city is authorized to accept this donation and to use it in said purpose, and I so moved.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh to authorize acceptance of donations and gifts for use by the Executive Department. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Point of order, I'm sorry, I had my hand up. President and Conventius, I just wanted clarification with the motion. The letter received said it was going to one specific school or is it for the Finance Committee, is it going to all the schools of the district? I just want to clarify that, what we're voting on.
Thank you, Counselor Mack.
I was under the impression that it was with the High School Backpack Program.
Thank you, Counselor Ron Cormier. Counselor Mack?
Thank you. No, that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure the motion was what we were voting on, which was equal to what the mayor's notification was. Thank you.
Counselor Cormier?
Yeah, I just noticed in the mayor's letter that it was exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Motion passes. Item 10554, a measure authorizing payment of prior year salary expenditure. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Walsh?
Yes, these are two items, one for the Animal Control Office and one for the Department of Public Works that were inadvertently neglected from inclusion or from payment in the prior year's budget because the one resulted from union negotiations and the other resulted from a step increase that was due to somebody for the prior year that wasn't paid. So there were small amounts and to clean the books up, these items are before us for approval and I move the money or move the money order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to authorize the payment of prior year.
That's my motion, is to authorize the payment for the individuals listed in. I apologize.
Thank you. So the motion is to authorize payment of prior year salary expenditure. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Public Safety Committee, Item 10540, an application by Ly Motor Sports LLC doing business as Blue Motor Group for a license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles, Class 2 at 144 Pearson Boulevard. This was asked for more time at the November 1, 2021 meeting. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. As we've discussed previously, this applicant had been discussed with the Building Commissioner. The Building Commissioner had concerns with the parking plan and said he would not be able to grant this application until he had such item. The city clerk has been in touch with this applicant several times but has not received any word back from them on adjusting their application to get this passed. Therefore, I am going to make a motion to remove this item from the calendar to allow this applicant to come back at a later date when they have the information they need for their application.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tyros to remove the item from the calendar. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, Item 10573, an ordinance to amend Section 68 of Chapter 171 of the Code of the City of Gardner entitled Personnel Compensation Schedule. This item, the clerk submitted it and it went to first printing on December 4. It does need 10 days, which would be December 14. So I just wanted the council to have that information before a motion is made.
Recommend more time, Madam President.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Boudreaux to have more time on this item. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Motion passes. Moving into new business, Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'm really happy that we voted for the parking meters for the downtown businesses. Just a suggestion, the history has always been done that this is done at the first December meeting, but moving forward, I'd love to make a suggestion that it's done in the first November meeting so that the residents and the merchants and those of us, those shopping at our local businesses have the entire month of December. I think this would have been really helpful even more so on Small Business Saturday. So I would just, just my suggestion, I'd like to see it earlier moving forward, but I hope this does help our local merchants have a very successful holiday season. That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boudreaux?
I'm going to keep this short because many, including myself, are still processing this news, but the City of Gardner earlier today have lost one of our biggest advocates and community champions in Boucher Funeral Home owner and president Andrew N. Boucher. It's something that is an incredibly hard loss and I'm sure others will speak on it this evening and for many months, years to come. He had a huge impact in the business and civic community, including in 2001, dropping everything and heading straight to the, to ground zero of 9/11. He was a friend of mine and to everybody in the City of Gardner and truly embodied community spirit and Wildcat pride. I would like to remind everybody to just hug their loved ones a little tighter this holiday season because you really never know. Our city is a little darker because of the loss of Andrew Boucher. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hardin?
Nothing new this week, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Craig Cormier?
I have nothing but to second the comments of Counselor Boudreaux and our sincere condolences to the family and loved ones of Mr. Boucher's family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Nothing new this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor General Awitt?
I have nothing new this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I too was saddened to hear about the passing of Andrew Boudreaux. Andrew was a wonderful person and tremendous asset to helping our city. Just as Counselor Boudreaux pointed out, my sincere condolences go out to his family. Also, I was saddened to hear about the passing of Gardner High School principal's son, and my sincere condolences go to the Bolger family. And that's all I have except wishing you all a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I move that we send a letter of condolence to the family of Andrew Boucher and Paula Bolger on the occasion of the loss of their loved one.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros to send a letter of condolence to the Boucher family as well as the Bolger family. Is there discussion on the motion? The Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Counselor Walsh, anything further?
Nothing else. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yeah, I have a note on the pass of Andrew Boucher. Of course, I knew him since he was a little youngster. And I'm very proud of the actions our mayor took today in sending a letter, which you I think have all seen a copy of. It's going to dictating that the city flag be flown at half mast for several days in honor of Andrew. But in his letter, he noted, I doubt that it's a completely comprehensive list of things that Andrew was involved with, and I hazard a guess that every one of us sitting here this evening and many out there worked with Andrew on any one of these things and had nothing but admiration for him. And again, I'm very glad we're sending a letter to the family and extending our condolences. You'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. I too send my sincerest condolences and these to the Bolger and Boucher families for their losses. Andrew was such an important part of this community. He was a friend to everybody that he met. He was just a wonderful guy. He was great for Gardner. He really was just an absolute shining star and he will certainly be missed. And as Counselor Cormier, Counselor Boudreaux, I echo everything everyone else said as well. I was glad to see that the mayor had put the flag lowering order in honor of Andrew. It was very, it's very well written. It really talks about really what made him such a great person and he will just be so truly missed in this community. I'll entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing prayer.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Boudreaux, seconded by Counselor Mack to adjourn after the closing prayer. The Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Awitt?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Ma?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President and Conventius?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Please stand for the closing prayer.
Almighty Father, who sees you everywhere, who has adjourned, we thank you for the opportunity and joint deliberation. We are actually witness during the course of this meeting. Blessed are all who are gathered here and the people who represent us, we are. They are, and do not attend to our common welfare until our next meeting.
The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, all.